I'd like to call the board. This special meeting of Borough Council tonight, and I said it's perfect. Mr. Lock, Manager Lock, would you call the roll?
My pleasure, President. Vice President, Paul here. Councilman, Mayor.
Here.
Councilor Connors.
Here.
Councilor Farrell.
As to be, I'm sorry, she is out of town on family matters and she's going to call in in a few minutes.
Councilor Ballard.
Here.
President Panko.
Here.
Councilor Lumber.
Here.
Councilor Golden.
Here.
Councilor Quon.
I expect her later.
Councilor Young.
Councilor Young.
She's on the phone.
Okay. Also was on the phone, she's out of town on family matters.
Councilor Whitney.
I don't know anything about this town.
Councilor Saltizia.
I expect her.
You do?
I think so.
They checked away for fifteen minutes.
Is it? Okay.
Madam President, you have a call.
Great, thank you. And I neglected to ask the mayor if he would lead us, oh, I just see Councilor McLaughlin walking in the room, so maybe we could add her to the attendance. Yes! I thought she was going to ask me to do that. Mayor, would you please just let me?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we have some time sensitive matters, which is why we decided to have this meeting. And we do have time for public comment, but I will ask that people who want to make public comment about the two agenda items, please confine yourselves to those agenda items, and then we'll have additional time for public comment when we have the BZNR meeting and the Admin Finance meeting. So, the two items are the proposed Taco Bell project at 459 463 and 471 York Road, and then an authorization for an assessment study of real property, which I will read the motion later on. So those are our two agenda items. Is there any public comment?
Yes.
State your name and your address.
Alexandria Cleo, 514 Greenwood. I am here in strong support of the Taco Bell. We have multiple businesses, oh, I'm sorry, multiple empty buildings in this town. Ejection of this offer will send a signal to the business community that we are not welcoming business here. I have done some research about the Summerwood Company. It may seem to be a really good, reputable company. I checked the Glassdoor accounts. People have said, people who work for them have said really nice things about them. They do charitable giving. I really find it offensive that everyone keeps saying that they've got to prove that they've got to make so much money, or that they've got to show that they have so much value. There are multiple businesses in this town who've never been asked to show that they can make a dollar, or that they have made a dollar. This is an honorable man with an honorable company. Taco Bell is a good company. I do ask, however, the Summerwood Company to make some adjustments to the drive-through, to consider limiting the hours, to working with this great community. I think you'll find we're good people here, the people are concerned. But I believe you're a very good and honorable operator, businessman, dealing with a very honorable community, and so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I did neglect to say that I'm going to tie people's comments to, confine them to three minutes. That was under three, so thank you. I just forgot to say it. Okay, any other public comment? Yes, state your name and address.
Hillary Fullborn, 300 Madder Road. I think most of, I know most of you, but as a little background, I grew up in Jenkentown and attended the schools from grades one through twelve. I currently own a law firm on Yorkway Place, and I live in the borough with my husband and our three children, two of whom attend our school. First, thank you for serving on Borough Council. It's such an important job, especially in such a small place like Jenkentown, where every one of your decisions directly affects the lives of so many of our residents and your neighbors. It's generally a thankless job, so thank you for taking this on. Second, thank you for ordering an independent analysis from EIS Solutions of potential tax revenue from the proposed plan to build a Taco Bell. While there are many, many reasons to not support this plan that requires fourteen variances, and that is very bad for our borough, our neighbors, and our current businesses, the one that we can all agree is unacceptable is the loss of tax revenue that we would all suffer with the building of this Taco Bell. So thank you for your skepticism, but the proposed Taco Bell will be worth, as the developers claimed, twice what every other Taco Bell in Montgomery County is worth. And thank you for investigating this claim to get your own numbers showing that the tax revenue would in fact decrease from the current revenue of the building. Lastly, thank you for listening to the voices of this community. To date, we have amassed 247 online signatures and 115 hard copy signatures on petitions, which represents 35% of the registered voters who voted in the last election. Borough Council is the voice of this community, and our community wants sustainable, walkable, productive development. The community, along with the planning commissioners, has set forth the vision for this development of Jenkentown in the Jenkentown 2035 Plan, set to be adopted next week. The Taco Bell requiring fourteen variances, surface parking on Old York Road, and a drive-through is directly in opposition to this plan, and is none of the things that we want for our community. We welcome good development in Jenkentown. Development that will enhance our town, improve life for our residents, and expand our tax revenue and fund our schools. And we hope that developers will come here with plans to do just that. However, this application as set forth does none of those things. And because of that, I ask that you vote to withdraw your support for this plan.
Thank you.
Hi, Felisa Armento. I've lived in the borough for 30 years. I've been a longtime volunteer on JCA events, co-president of New Commerce Club, vice president of Library Board, very involved in the community. I've got one daughter in high school, and I count my family very lucky to be part of such an engaged community. My business, the Art Partnership, has been in Jenkentown for over 10 years, and our office is currently on first floor of 463 York Road. We employ six people, two of whom are in the borough, so we keep all of our revenue basically within a 10-mile radius. Taco Bell is claiming $1 million in revenues, which are bringing gross receipts, business privileged receipts of under $1,000. Presently, there are at least five leasable spaces on the property. Just alone, our business alone generates $1.2 to $1.4 million, which converts into gross receipts, business privilege receipts of over $4,000. Hillary discussed the discrepancy of the tax already. For those of us working together in opposition, wearing purple tonight, to the proposed Taco Bell, this is not a save the building campaign. I do believe, though, that finding an adaptive reuse for the current building would be very much more in keeping with the 2035 plan that we're looking to adopt. The seller has every right to sell, and I'm well aware that my business will have to move at some point. This is really about whether drive-through open to 2:00 AM is the right development for this location in Jenkentown. Thank you for your consideration.
My name is Adrian Redd. Every person in this room knows me, knows the time that I put into this community, knows that I'm, despite my fandom of Grateful Dead, not wild-eyed nor strident. I am a party of interest, I'd like to be registered as a party of interest, and I cede the balance of my time to the attorney that we've hired to speak on our behalf in opposition to these fourteen variances.
Thank you. My name is Mike Liano from the law firm in Freeman Schuman. I represent a group of neighbors who are opposed to the Taco Bell application. My concern is from a purely legal standpoint. It's already been indicated there are approximately 14 variances that have been requested. Many of them are dimensional variances, which the zoning hearing board will consider in the course of its deliberations. But this borough has seen fit to, not once but twice, prohibit drive-through facilities within the language of this ordinance. So there must have been a pretty clear intent that the drive-through facilities are not something that this borough is looking for, especially at this particular location. This variance, the variance requested, is a, the burden is on the applicant. Obviously, they approve their right to have that variance, but they have a lot more to do than just say, "We would like to have a drive-through for Taco Bell." They have to prove the use, they have to prove lack of other uses, they have to prove investigations that they've made with respect to the use of the building. There's a lot to do. And with the borough ordinance being as clear as it is, I think that that is a tremendously uphill battle. We intend to be present if the matter goes forward. We intend to be present at the zoning hearing board and to raise the issues that we know legally are going to be raised. My job is not to raise the emotional issues, my job is to raise the legal issues, and we will be there to do so. Thank you.
Madam President, I could just ask a question of Mr. Liano. And I know this usually doesn't have purple comment. I just want to make sure your clients understand that this is not the zoning hearing board. This is not, I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that they understand that. This is tonight about whether or not I'll withdraw all the support.
And they understand that completely.
Okay.
And we know that our time will come before the zoning hearing.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you so much, Mr. Liano.
Thank you, Mr. Liano.
And I was also a little puzzled by your statement of if the matter goes forth, because my understanding is that the application has been received.
Well, just a question of whether or not the applicant desires to go forward on the day of questioning.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other public comment? Yes.
Good evening, Council, you all know us, Scott Hummel and Joe from Summerwood. We've been here since November, trying, I'm sorry, Allison Fritschel, I'm sorry. We still want council support for this project. It's scheduled for next week, we have our witnesses lined up. We are more than happy to, since November, we've been asking council what you'd like to see from us, if there's any concerns that you have regarding drive-through hours, regarding things like that, we're happy to talk about that. We're happy to talk about reducing those hours to eliminate that variance as a condition of your support. We are happy to talk about other things that are concerning to you that could be a condition of your support rather than you withdraw, if there are other concerns. You know, we were asked to come here because new residents were coming that were going to ask you to withdraw. As far as the e-consult that's been out since March, I'm not a tax expert. We hired an expert, as you know, that came and presented all the numbers to you. I would defer to your solicitor, who I know absolutely is an expert in that area, and I would, you know, ask him, maybe put my mouth, as to which numbers he would say if it went to court would be upheld. The other thing about our report is we're giving council an opportunity to, let's say it comes in lower than what Mr. Bissy said. Say you take our report to the court and say, "This is what the owner actually said it was worth," and you get what our report said. So regardless of what anybody else says, if we're dead wrong, a judge is going to say, most likely, and again, I defer to Mr. Hitchens, how can you go against your own number? So this is going to bring in rev, just like it's been, when revenue for the borough is going to bring in traffic light in Old York Road to slow down traffic, and it's going to redevelop that property. I spoke to the owners, the Hellwigs, this morning. They've been trying to, you know, redevelop or sell that property for a long time, and, you know, it's been, I think 2013, they said they'd merge their funeral homes. I know it is rented now, but they've had, they've had trouble. So it's an opportunity for the borough to get more taxes on their books, an opportunity for the seller to, you know, get out from under a property that they can't, you know, they're not making revenue they need to pay the taxes right now, it's over-assessed. And if, you know, if they do file to have it reassessed, those taxes, we believe, from our numbers, from our expert said, they're going to go down. So you're going to receive less taxes on that property than you do now if, if our expert is correct in what, it's hearsay, he said to us, that that property is over-assessed. So again, we are happy to talk to council between now and Thursday about conditions. We're happy to talk to you in public session about things you're concerned about. Hours on drive-through I know are a big one. Other than that, you know, the plan is exactly, all those variances are just to get us to the plan that you approved, so to speak, when you came back here in November. So that's all it is. It's just strictly allows you to carry out certain dimensional variances. The use variant, the variance issue is not for council to decide, it's for the zoning hearing board to decide. So, and council can support any project that they want to. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Bissy Leach. I reside behind the proposed Taco Bell at 434 Leedham Street. I am also a business owner in town. I own a business on West Avenue, 714 West Avenue, and I recently expanded that business to 539 Old York Road. I give my party status to Mr. Liano.
I know, if the board, if Borough Council will allow, I know it's really not a give-and-take situation, Patrick.
Yeah, no, no, I just want to make sure they understand it's not, there's no party status here.
There's no party status.
Public, everybody understands.
Yeah, everybody understands. I just want to make one point, and I know the Borough Council knows this. I represent developers, you may not know that, but I represent a lot of developers. And I don't think I've made a single application in any municipality over the past 40 years where I haven't raised a tax issue. Tax issue is not really what's before you and not before the zoning hearing board. It's the appropriateness of the use that the zoning hearing board has to make a determination on, and the appropriateness of the use that this Borough Council has to decide whether they're before, whether they're for it or against it. So developers will raise that specter of, "Oh my God, you're going to lose tax revenue." Well, that's not what the issue really is. The issue is, is this the right use for this location and this property?
Yes.
Good evening, Scott Hummel, equitable owner for the Hellwigs property. Just want to make sure that the council is aware of some of the restrictions of other potential uses for the Hellwigs property. Obviously, there's a plethora of uses out there, you can name a hundred, whether or not financially it would work, if it would be sustainable, raise taxes, not raise taxes, who knows? But I did want to make sure that the public is aware and council is aware that there's a deed restriction, not placed on by the Hellwigs. There's a deed restriction for alcohol or against alcohol on that property. Just so you know that the pool of potential tenants out there, forget about the restaurant, whether it's a bring-your-own or if they're serving alcohol. The grantor, I guess, who placed that restriction on the property is not present and cannot be reached to lift it. The borough can't lift it either, I can't lift it from the Hellwigs. So when we were looking at the property, and of course, from an economical standpoint, to make the numbers work based upon what we're paying for it, we had to eliminate right away restaurants that serve alcohol or could serve alcohol on their premises, even if it was a bring-your-own. By example, I happen to like Marzoni's, they couldn't tie her. If Taco Bell did a different type of menu product, they cannot serve alcohol. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware, and I'm happy to say that I have always my preferences of different uses also. But just the pool of potential users isn't quite as big as you think, not only because of the economics, the cost for site development, store owner management, everything like that, but also the deed restriction that exists. So, thank you very much.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have you spoken with the tenants about, you're the equitable owner, and I just wondered if you have engaged with the tenants regarding the use and purchase of the property?
I have not spoken directly to the tenants. I made sure that I didn't want to interrupt the Hellwigs' existing business or didn't want to rattle any feathers. They're obviously free to have their own opinions, I respect their opinions. I have a copy of all their leases, I didn't want to make that public knowledge by their undue diligence. I had to understand whether these are terminable and what leases weren't terminable. I'm okay to say that nobody in there is secure, the way the Hellwigs have this set up. They want to sell this property, and every tenant is terminable in there. I did look at their numbers, and I don't even know how to pay their existing taxes, whether it's out of the pocket or not, but I know the cash flow. I do want to reiterate the fact that we will be on the Hellwigs' behalf before August applying for a real estate tax appeal, just because based upon the current assessment and the net operating income, and how the county will probably take a look at that to analyze what the assessed value should be. We feel from our expert that it is over-assessed by our experts. Who knows what will happen, happen in the county, by about twice of what its true value is today. So there's, there's no way to tell, again, what will happen with the taxes in the future. We showed a report that it will go up for Taco Bell. We're also spending our money because we truly believe they will go down in its existence, revenue stream, and current taxes.
Thank you. Why can't the owner change the deed restriction?
Well, good question, and I will leave it to the solicitor to maybe explain it better. They didn't place a deed restriction on it.
Who did?
Predecessor. And we can't even locate who that is to lift it. We have lifted deed restrictions in the past by hunting down the, I guess it's the grantor of it. In this case, we couldn't, trust me, we'd like to, we'd like alcohol on that. But I would let the solicitor better answer the legal component of how the deed restriction is lifted.
Well, I just find that funny, you can't find who that is and, and why you can't change that. I just, it's the first I'm hearing of it, that's interesting.
It's very difficult, also there, and I don't know the ins and outs of the church meeting House Street, but there's an inclination that we're not going to be able to have within seventy feet of the church. That's what, we have to look into that, because I'm not expert in looking at control.
What did you put in the stamp?
We actually said that at the very first, in November, when we were here, we said there was a deed restriction for alcohol. So that's been, we have been saying that, it's around.
Irrelevant of the church, because I don't really know much about what you can and what you can't do when the church ever closed. There is a deed restriction on that property for alcohol. And again, I'll leave it to the solicitor to better explain how one lifts that deed restriction.
I don't think we need to go into the ins and outs, but, because we talked about deed restrictions with other matters before, so I think council's familiar with what deed restrictions are right now.
One thing on behalf of the Hellwigs, I'm sorry, I want the tenants to know that they very much like them being at that property, in no way, you know, they want to make sure the tenants understand that. They're very happy with the tenants, right there, so I want to make sure they don't think that it's anything against the tenants from the other side.
Yeah, I don't need to apply, I don't need to apply at all.
I think I applied that, so I don't.
I'm my naivete, but I just wondered if the property was for sale, if you asked the tenants, did they work by it?
The property was never listed for sale. It's never been listed on the open market, ever. I talked to the realtor. Hillary Fullborn, 300 Madder Road. So if the Hellwigs were so serious about selling it, why was it never listed?
Don't talk to me.
There's no listing, there's no listing right. So yes, no, I don't actually expect an answer, because I did speak to the realtors representing the Hellwigs and representing the developer. It was never listed on the open market. So yes, there may have been a sign, yes, there is a private deal, all totally legal, but that does not show any intention to actually go out and sell it. I've spoken to multiple realtors that have other interested parties that would be interested in developing with this property. This is not a desperation situation, and I think the threat from the developer to go and try to get a tax appeal assessment is really kind of insulting. If you were to calculate the income capitalization approach that they used on their appraisal, using the current income capital, that income from the property today, it would be one and a half times what the Summerwood Company could bring in. So I don't know which way it would go, but at the same time, if you're going to bank on anything, banking on a company that is not going to bring in any additional tax revenue is not the way to go.
Thank you.
I'm going to call in.
I just want to respond to the issue with the selling, I'm sorry. I think they're out of time, that's been three minutes, right?
You also were given a second.
But I didn't use my whole three minutes.
I just, well, I spoke with the Hellwigs this morning, and they did indicate
that they had spoken with Ms. Leach about purchasing the property. Ms. Leach just spoke with them, and at this point, that's not an option, so that has been explored.
Okay, thank you, answering my question. Councilor Gold.
I'm certainly interested in looking further into how the deed restriction might be lifted. And so there will be more legal conversation using the actual documents. But I can tell you, I've seen the use of deed to my house, and I'm not allowed to live there, and I'm still there, so.
Well, that's because of the Fair Housing Act, it made that deed restriction illegal. Removing a deed restriction that's not patently illegal, saying Catholics or Jews can't live there, because I've lived in a house, I can't live in two, isn't the same as trying to remove a perfectly legal deed restriction. It's one of the hardest things to do unless you can find the person who put the restriction on and get him or her to rescind it. They can be dead. Yes. So have we moved beyond public comment?
Hold on one second, was that, was that your comment that you wanted to?
Oh, that's clear enough.
Okay. I asked a question, hold on, it's like, how do you reinforce a deed restriction like this? Like, whose job is it to say you can't serve? Is that the borough?
I'm trying to answer the question.
Is this your time of public comment?
No, no, I was just going to try to answer the question.
No, let me just ask Allison.
It's the very start, but I'd like, just the question, the couch, it's my three minutes, if you don't mind. Ally Lester, 315 Greenwood.
I'm going to ask our attorney to, we can we comment on that?
Thank you.
We're not really discussing deed restrictions right now, but.
Yeah, it's a really difficult thing to answer in a short blurb. Obviously, the first party that would have the immediate rights to enforce a deed restriction would be the family or whoever owned the deed restriction to begin with.
Do we not know?
Right, but theoretically, if other people were aware of the deed restriction, I'm sure there could be probably an equitable basis to claim to enforce the same deed restriction. So for example, let's say the neighboring property was aware that a deed restriction was on his neighbor's property. He may try to make an equitable basis for enforcing it. I mean, I think that's beyond the scope of what is tonight, but I'm trying to give you at least some of the labor, or what are the potential issues out there?
If you play English, that's not the borough's in charge of getting rid of the deed restriction.
That's why I think it's beyond the scope of what the borough needs to be concerned about, but I'm trying to be helpful to both council and to.
All right, are there any other public comments? Oh, Allison.
Oh, thanks.
State your name and address.
Ally Lester, 315 Greenwood, again. I just want to say that at the beginning of this whole process, and like you guys said, it's been a long time, we were all under the impression that this building was of lost cause, but since then, we've all learned a great deal about it. I never even really gave it more of a second look. It's beautiful, it's in great shape, those pictures from the inside are stunning. You know, it's a vibrant, economically viable space with a lot of potential. And, you know, while, again, if these developers were coming in and they bought this property, they chose to knock it down and put something up that was to code, that would be a shame, and it would further erode the character of our community, but it would be entirely their business. But the fact that they're asking for these variances here makes it our business. And, you know, we really do, I do think that, I understand this is not the hearing, but I do think that the zoning hearing board takes your endorsement, you know, into high consideration, you know, it's very important in this. And where you stand, you know, even if you, you know, just go neutral on this, I think would really, you know, go a long way. And, you know, my concern with these variances is that, you know, once we do this, once we allow these, you can't deny it to the next person that asks. You know, we've seen, we've all heard recently about the plight of Whitehall Township, where that headed, and, you know, certainly don't want to open Pandora's box there. So, thank you all. I know this is really a hard decision, I know there's, you know, two sides to this, but, you know, this is really, and I want also to say, I'm not anti-Taco Bell. I am not proud, but I've had my share of ten pacts in my time. But this particular location, this particular proposal, with this 2:00 AM drive-through, which by the way, I want to remind you all that you had talked in a meeting, I don't know what came of it, but you did mention that you were interested in, you know, definitely nothing later than midnight at one point. You know, I just want to say, this is not right. This is, this, you, it just, you know, go out to that street, see those children playing, see how close this is going to be those houses, it's just, this isn't us. So, thank you all.
Just one more. I keep hearing Alexandria Cleo, 514 Greenwood, that other people have approached this property, other people are interested in this property. Developers are not shy people. So I am sure if a developer really wanted that property, they would have gone to the Hellwigs and said, "We'll buy it." But no one has. No one has. That property is available, I feel really bad. Your property, what you've done to the property you made a view, I really think you should buy a property. You would make it so great. But this property needs to be sold, because we have a buyer. We have a business that actually wants to come here and stay in business. We can't keep businesses in Jenkentown. I'm a very progressive liberal, et cetera, but when we get a good business partner, someone who really, again, go to Glassdoor, you'll find he's got his good reviews by his employees at any other company out there. He does really good community work. And yes, he would actually invest in this community. What a shame that would be. We actually have a buyer, not a fictitious buyer, not someone who's pretend, not someone who's saying, "Hey, I've spoken." We actually have one. I welcome you to our community.
Actually, I think I forgot something that helped me remember. It's really quick, I promise. You know, this is a huge franchise, 30 seconds, this was a huge, this is a huge franchise, something like 100 of these, right, in this, in this. We're talking about, you know, this guarantee that, you know, what they promised in their tax assessment. You know, we always have the fallback of going and fighting it with a lawyer if it doesn't pan out. Well, you're going to be, you know, bucking heads with a franchise of 100 or in some Taco Bells, that lawyer. some Taco Bells, that lawyer. I, you know, it just seems like a gamble to me. So, thank you.
All right. I want to check in with the two counselors who are on the phone to see if you have any questions or comments that you want to make during this period.
I do not have any comments.
Oh, wait a minute. That was awkward. Melissa. Okay, first Melissa.
I do not have any comments on this slide. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Kieran.
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Okay. So, we have two motions before us, and I wonder, did you want to make one of these motions?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sure we can.
Yeah, she was asking. I have to. I make a motion to consider withdrawal of Borough Council's support for the proposed Taco Bell at 459, 463, and 471 Yerkes Road.
Before there's a second, if I could just have clarification, you're making a motion to withdraw Borough Support, not to consider it, but to actually withdraw.
Yeah, to consider withdrawing, yeah. I'm sorry.
To actually withdraw.
To actually withdraw, yes, to actually withdraw.
Perfect. Second.
Thank you.
And so, questions or comments? Yes.
So, I know I'm speaking to hear myself speak since I think I judged the room fairly well, but I think it's a terrible shame for us to change our position on this. This will be the third time we've voted on exactly this question. We supported the first two times and now we changed the position. And the reasons, all the reasons that we supported it before are still absolutely the case. We have a very credible assessment that says that the tax revenue will go up north of $80,000 versus the current revenue, which is likely to go down from the owner that they're going to challenge the current $40,000 or so assessment. And so, there's probably better than a $40,000 a year swing in the context of the school district talking about maybe having to cut certain programs or increase class sizes and everything else because of the reduction in revenue. We have, will be doing the developers a terrible disservice. They came to us back in November and were encouraged by us and voted to support this and then voted again to continue supporting this. And on the assumption that we were supporting it so they had a chance at ZHB, because this drive-through variance without our support has no chance. They've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, I guess. And so, for us to say, yes, we're going to support it, so then they go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then we say, "It's changed our mind," is disrespectful and shitty to them. And I wish we weren't considering doing it or were about to do it, which I think we are. We're going to turn away people who would come and spend $3 million or so dollars here in our borough, improving stormwater management, putting in traffic controls on Leure Road, which is a terrible problem for us. There's no more public comment, so you can sit. There's, who are going to put new buildings in the place of decrepit buildings, who are going to create jobs, good jobs for teenagers who need jobs, who are going to, who've expressed perfect willingness to reduce the drive-through hours to midnight. If we said right now, will you reduce the drive-through hours to midnight if we maintain our support, I bet you dollars to donuts they would say yes. And the downside is aesthetic at best.
Madam President, will you allow a correction to that?
No.
Yeah, now we have a motion on the floor in a second.
And by the way, the objection to drive-through is not a categorical rejection. We allow drive-throughs in the Gateway District. We don't allow it in town center. But these guys are, they are a couple hundred yards away from Gateway. And so, the allowing the drive-through here isn't allowing something that we would never consider. If they were a couple hundred yards farther down, they'd just have it. And the idea that having a drive-through is going to destroy Jenkentown, the level of the intense fervor against it is frankly puzzling to me. It's a restaurant. I mean, it's a Taco Bell on 611. This is not the end of the universe. But it's a way to get people to put $3 million into the infrastructure of town, and it's a way to get $40,000 more revenue, according to our lawyer. Now, there was a lawyer who's opposed to the project, who has an axe to grind, who says, "Well, no, it's not going to be there." But our own lawyer says, and I'm putting words in your mouth, but correct me if I get it wrong, that they came, Taco Bell came with their assessor and their assessment in a public meeting with their lawyer present and stood up and said, "This is the right assessment." Can, I'm not going to question you, but there's not a better weapon that we could take in to challenge an assessment that was down and get that assessment pushed back up to or nearly to what they said. So, the story that the revenues are going to go down is not credible. And we've asked people, we've given them our support, and now we're yanking it, so we're going to cause them to waste several hundred thousand dollars. And that's not right. And we're not going to get the improvements to the infrastructure, and that's a terrible shame. And it just, it feels stupid to be voting out for the third time to change our position when none of the information has changed. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Could I say something? I agree with all everything Rick said. I also take Mr. Yanoff's point that the scope of things we're talking about with respect to the zoning hearing board's better decision has kind of grown beyond what the scope will be for the zoning board. But an additional piece of this is that we've heard from the owners and the people backing the Art Partnership that they love Jenkentown, they love being here, they love doing business here. There are plenty of locations in Jenkentown that could very easily house a business like our partnership. So, I mean, it would be an inconvenience, no doubt, but, you know, it puts a bit of a shadow on the idea that the tax revenue from the Art Partnership is going to disappear at very well life. But Jenkentown is a nice place and there are plenty of convenient locations for a potential move. So, that's entering into my decision as well.
Well, entering into my decision is not, well, one, there isn't a clear notice that we're going to reduce that or something like that. So, I have a bit of pause on that. But more than that, as a person representing President Support One, I'm concerned that we've gotten such a loud and vocal public outcry against it and that just, I give pause to that. Like, I just, I hear that and that makes me think that we have an obligation to be responsive to what it seems as though a significant portion of people who've at least come out to speak on behalf of this had had to say about it. And that's what makes me think that, you know, about our duty in this role. And that's what gives me pause.
Any other questions or discussion?
Four, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this motion is to withdraw our support. Is it to oppose it? Is it to stay neutral on this?
Thank you for asking that clarification. I wanted to say that I believe the motion is simply to stay neutral. So, we may have to revise this wording, or is just the withdrawal the same?
It seems clear that it's a withdrawal of support. It was not a withdrawal of support and a motion to make an opposition. It was just a withdrawal of support.
Correct, okay.
So, it's potentially for to stay neutral if we support the withdrawal of this.
Correct. No one from the solicitor office would show up to the zoning hearing board to say anything with regard to the application.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Golden.
Sure. Also Ward One, so I hear what our folks are saying. Part of my opposition to this, my certainly supportive withdrawing, counsel's support of this, is that originally, we were pressed in time to discuss this, to decide it very quickly, and that has turned into not a problem. So, we were asked to do it immediately because an application was going to be made. We were told we had all the information. We did have discussions with the developers and a good deal, but the fact of additional information and additional opportunity to reflect since November, I believe that counsel should not take a position in favor of this development. The zoning hearing board will decide some of the issues that you raised, Rick. And I appreciate and I agree with you wholeheartedly on the need, I think we all agree on the need, to increase the tax revenue for the school district. I just do not feel that I'm in a position to support this project in front of the zoning hearing board, and I wholly support our withdrawal of our previous motion.
Thank you. Counselor Ashton Young, do you want to say anything?
I have no initial problem.
Okay. All right. And I'll just add that I also really appreciate your views and, you know, the passion with which you stated them, Counsel Brother. And I feel terrible about, you know, leading on the developer. At the same time, I've been listening to constituents from Ward One, I also represent Ward One, and the public concern that has been expressed about such things as the drive-through, the setbacks, and the late night hours for the drive-through. So, I do hear that there is willingness to negotiate about those things from the developer. However, we had talked about those things before and then the application came through and I read through it and none of them seemed to be addressed in any way. So, and maybe that's a lack of communication, be that as it may. I support this motion to withdraw support and remain neutral for this proposed Taco Bell project on your part. Something else?
I just want to say that one could never predict how any kind of boards would decide. From everything I've been told, asking for the variance for the drive-through without counsel's support is very unlikely to be passed. So, understand that this is probably shutting down the project.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Are there any other questions or concerns? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to withdraw support for this project, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to have to do a roll call, so.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
And Akiran?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
So, that's four, five, nine, two, sorry, we're losing count there. All right, so the motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for your stating your public comment. Our next motion has to do with authorizing a property or building feasibility and assessment study for real property for the purpose of potential relocation of Borough Hall, the study not to exceed $25,000. As everyone knows, Borough Council has put out an RFI for the redevelopment of this property, and that does mean relocation of Borough Hall. So, we must begin to look into suitable locations. And we want to go ahead with some engineering and other kinds of assessments so that we know whether a property that we're looking at is, would be suitable. So, that's my motion. Do I hear a second?
Sure. I could actually interject, Madam President.
Go ahead.
I would ask if you could revise your motion with your packets tonight. There should be a proposed resolution. I'm not sure if you have that in your packet.
I do. And you want me to read the resolution?
No, no, I would just ask you, revise your motion that it's a motion to approve this resolution.
Oh, thank you.
Because, under the Borough Code, so essentially, what we're asking counsel to do is two things. One is to authorize the feasibility study not to exceed $25,000, but as well as to authorize the execution of the option agreement for the proposed property. And under the Borough Code, you have to do that by resolution, if it's an agreement. So, therefore, I would ask, Madam President, if you could revise your motion to approve Resolution 2018-18, a resolution off. I'm sorry.
Are you going to read it?
I was just going to read that. A resolution authorizing and approving an option agreement with Church of Our Savior for potential acquisition of real property.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry about that.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, is there a second? Okay, are there any questions or discussion about this?
Excuse me?
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, pose.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Is there any other new business that needs to go forward to full counsel at this time? All right, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
I'm just checking to. Okay, all right. Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, so Borough Council meeting is adjourned. We will now move toward, to our.
I'd like to finance funding of June 20, 2018 to order. Is there any public comment for any finance?
Oh, I do have something. The chief is out, he's having surgery tomorrow, and he's going to be fine. It's not coming in. But what he is, I'm just trying to say that now, since all the funny people here.
We're on.
But he is going, he wanted to reiterate, I think he wanted to do this in a full, he was afraid it was going to go through, but he wants to let you know that because that one officer left, that he does want to run a test for civil service to get a list going again for patrolmen.
I thought we already discussed it, approved that.
He wasn't sure. He wasn't sure. And it's in the budget, which is why I'm bringing that up.
Well, it's in the budget, but I thought we already.
We voted a poll safety.
To move it to council.
Maybe that's what he was thinking that, I don't know why he was so urgent. Yeah, I don't know.
Whenever there's money, people always ask Gavin in finance.
Yeah, but.
Public safety already did.
Okay, sorry about that. I thought that, but he wasn't sure.
That's why I get all four of you, just to listen to terms of money. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. In your folders, you will find a tax collector report, a financial report. Rick, do you have anything to, any color to add on the financial report?
I just mentioned that we had a liquid fuel audit, which had no findings.
Mess of flying colors again.
So, that was exciting. That's really it as far as moving these things.
Things are tracking as per budget. I think overtime is the one place where.
Maintenance issues across the board and some overtime issues.
Yeah, but there's nothing material. JCA, anything from JCA? Karen's not here and I know we're getting ready for big summer events. And Rec Ward, it's been very busy and I've seen great things happening out on the square.
It's been really nice the last two weeks, really nice. And I think that the Borough Blue House and the new coffee slash ice cream place has really added to the festiveness of the event. It just allows for people to hang out longer and it's going until nine o'clock. Both fans have been excellent, so.
Yeah, and the Rec Ward volunteers really put in a terrific number of hours of a lot of work.
They really do.
End of the summer, I think we.
Steve told, yeah, Steve told, I know Pam Lynch and Christian Soltisak, and I know I'm forgetting people because there's more people on there.
Chrissy Lynch.
Chrissy Lynch. They're all, they're all indeed part of that and making sure that that goes off.
Everybody else named Lynch.
That that goes off well. So, I think you're right. Saying something to the, and it was funny, there was a group of mayors, Gene Sword from Ambler contacted me and wanted to know if I would walk around other mayors of boroughs in the area and would be particularly doing on a Tuesday night because of that. It's a nice thing, so.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, I was in the Rec Ward for a while. They're spelled out a lot of work and it's a lot of fun.
Really.
Well, thanks very much. So, for new business, I have two things that I forgot to put up to the agenda, so I need to stick them on here. One is we need to send, well, I asked that we send to full counsel, Resolution 2018-17 for a DCED flood mitigation grant. This was approved during the May council meeting. However, the entire project cost has gone up and so we need to reapprove authorizing the submittal of this flood mitigation grant for a total of $500,000 against a project uh, which is expected to cost $800,000. This is to take care of the Cedar Street flooding. It's actually, what is it, a 15-acre area on the shore of the acre. Uh, there's sort of a huge area that all seems to manage to pour right into the bottom of that hill on Cedar Street. Um, we're gonna find additional grants to cover the rest. The Borough's not putting out 300,000, but this is a good chance to get 500,000 of it. Um, and we need to ask Borough Council to approve that resolution, so I move that we do.
I'm just wondering, what is the change? What's the delta?
Uh, it went up from 775 to 801,000 dollars.
Exactly.
Total cost. Yeah. Uh, just, we have to do it to cross the lines, yeah. So, uh, motion and second. Any more discussion?
Who's granted it?
DCED.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll put that on the council agenda. And then the other is a resolution, um, that I embarrassingly will tell you I know very little about because I was just told at the last minute I had to add it on. Um, and this is Resolution 2018-19 LCS Grant Demo. It's the full information I have, so I'm gonna lean on staff to tell me what the heck that is.
This is a local share grant. Uh, we have applied, we're applying for, for the demolition of the structures on Cedar Street properties.
Oh, demolition of the stuff for the park.
Okay. The Green Region Grant, we will note, uh, on this property by the end of June will be good, which will cover all the planning and engineering of it.
Okay.
This is the second phase. This will be the demolition of the structures, uh, abating any issues that we have with asbestos or whatever.
Sure.
Putting the site on grade and, um, and stabilizing the site, or planting grass on, it's a very minor stormwater work.
Okay. What's the amount of the grant?
Uh, $64,000.
And do you know what the match is?
It's a 25% match.
Okay, but we've got that much capital projects.
We do, we have, we've budgeted for this grant.
We've budgeted for this grant. All right. So I apologize for not having had the information at the time, which is the last minute that it has to give on, um, this month if we can. So I move that, uh, we ask council to approve this Resolution 2018-19, uh, for this grant of demolition of the park, the Reddy Park or the.
Cedar Street.
Cedar Street Park.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we're back to the, uh, to the business. Professionals auditing services contract. Uh, our auditor, Barbara Kane Thornton, you'll remember, started a couple of years ago and coming in, saving us a ton of money versus the previous auditors and we've actually been very close with their work. Um, I know that you guys have really only seen really coming to present the results, but I hope you've been as pleased as I have about that. Um, they have increased the amount a little bit, $400, uh, a year, uh, increase for auditing the borough, and $300 for each of the firehouses. We have audited the borough portion of the firehouse budgets. And I'd ask, uh, that everybody approve our executing aspects of the contract. I don't think this has to be a motion to council, it's just a, a thumbs up.
Yeah, they've done a good job.
Okay. Is everybody in support?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I want to send a motion to full council to pay, uh, to make the final payment, uh, pursuant to the 2017 small water grant. So this is to pay National Water Main Cleaning Company $52,000 that we got from the small water grant. This has been, um, fixing the rehabilitation of, uh, one of the two drainage basins within the borough that experiences, exceeds its, is on running need. And so this is gonna, they redid the storm sewers on running need where they flood. Uh, and we should pay them now, just to fix it for it. Um, is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to mention that this is for, um, cured-in-place pipe lining and roof control and routing.
Yes, that's correct.
Really important parts of cleaning up our flood mitigation.
It is, and it also was a way to do it that didn't involve digging the whole things up and replacing them all at terrific expense, or lining them with brand-new pipes in every case, places where routing could fix it, et cetera, it was done. Uh, you may remember, our previous engineering firm, uh, Payson, they're, introduced themselves to the exit door by telling us we should just reline every storm sewer in the entire borough for a million dollars. Um, this was not done that. So, um, uh, did we say, did we vote on, we have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. We put that. Uh, this is the same one that I said we'd left off the agenda, the little street grant. Uh, okay, she's in it? Okay, so, sorry, I got that twice. Local, liquid fuels audit. So, uh, we got audited, um, we get a bunch of money from gas taxes, we spend it on streets, they come in audit and make sure that we only spent it on things we're allowed to spend it on, and we did, and we passed the audit. Again, I thank the professional staff who keep, uh, very good records, and so these things are swift and painless, at least painless to everybody except for Rick. And we're, we're, the next is to ask, uh, that we send to full council, ordinance 2018-1, and this is, uh, amending ordinance 2017-1, which provided regulations governing, governing medical marijuana dispensary and medical marijuana grower processor uses. Um, this will augment the ordinance passed earlier, so it will mirror neighboring communities, giving us the same opportunity to collect taxes as neighboring communities. So this is really, I would say, catching up. This is an evolving area since these things just became legal and the state law was just passed and the other boroughs around were just passing their ordinances. We want to match, so we're on a full footing to try to win some of these businesses. Do you have a second?
Can you? Oh, when do we ask questions?
Right now. You will?
I am having trouble getting to drop the box tonight, so can you?
So I can read the.
Can you give me the, like, the fifty cent or what the difference is? Shh.
Do you want to?
Yeah, do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, so essentially what ordinance 2018-1 is going to do is, is create a definition for grower processors and then place it, put those grower processors in a location within the municipality.
Just like we did for dispensaries.
Exactly. When you did dispensaries, you did it for them, you just didn't create one for grower processors.
Okay.
So we're doing it for grower processors.
Very grower.
And, and just so it's clear, we're placing grower processors in the G Gateway Commercial District as a permitted use, subject to the same requirements that dispensaries have, as well as a few additional parts that were discussed previously in that area where other municipalities require of those grower processors, such as no noxious fumes, noises, anything emanating from the building itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, signage, et cetera.
Right. And also, well, the, the state law puts a huge number of restrictions on their signage and their security and everything else. So it seems like it's pretty comfortable.
Okay.
So I have a second. All in favor?
As long as they commence drive-throughs for this.
Yeah. Hey, right across the street from a Taco Bell, perfect, but.
I know. We came so high.
That's how the revenue's doubled.
Please, Madam Law?
We, we voted, council voted to allow advertising this ordinance, so it has been advertised.
Okay. This, this is moving to vote on the actual thing, so it will be a hearing, that's to be a hearing because it's a zoning ordinance, so we might have a stenographer. So we'll get a comment. Thank you for clarifying.
At, at next council meeting?
Yeah, the next, uh, full council meeting.
On the Wednesday.
Yeah. Because it's a zoning ordinance, it's already been published, but we have to, I'll have all the comment about it and have the stenographer, if you can. So, thanks very much. Um, ongoing business, the residential use and occupancy. Um, we've researched other municipalities that have the same lateral inspection program that we do, as well as financing options from both private institutions and Pennvest, and the details, um, are still coming. So we've asked a bunch of questions over a bunch of people and we don't have the answers ready to present to you, but, um, we haven't forgotten about it. And, uh, Mr. Garvin, you're perfectly welcome to take credit for the idea. It is, in fact, a concern to us that we put a financial burden on people that could be devastated sometimes with our laws, yet we believe that the inspection of the laterals and the maintenance of sidewalks and curbs are absolutely necessary to the proper, um, function of the borough, so we're trying to do something on both sides. Act 511, per capita tax information. Um, we ask the administration to review the per capita tax, um, collection and cost of collection, um, to see how much it costs us to collect how little money. Um, and then I think we should also take into consideration how much of a just, sort of annoyance it is versus how little money it is, um, when we make our decision. Unfortunately, we've had, everybody kind of busy, just, we don't, we don't have the, the numbers ready yet, but next month we're gonna have it, right? He says.
Um, of course, I think the numbers are fairly solid. Um, it was really just an interpretation about whether or not we could reinstitute if we did, took it off the books and, uh, and just, I had some other issues about the informational aspect of it.
All right, but can we be ready to have a full discussion on the next month?
Sure, absolutely, yeah. And, and in fairness to Rick, that is entirely my fault. Um, Rick had asked me to get back to him on the legal side.
Hey, we're everybody working a trillion hours on a trillion different things. We understand it, but next month I want to do it.
Not problem.
Thank you.
Yep.
2016, thank you, I'm trying to find my place. Um, 2016 CDBG grant, which got bundled in with the 2017 CDBG grant for handicap ramps. The county's completed the review of the bid documents, permission to advertise, and bid has been granted by council. The project is gonna take place as soon as the school year ends. This is the ton of handicap ramps. Um, and it combined two years into one, and also our engineers discounted their work significantly off the, they could have charged us to enable us, that added like seven ramps or something to what we could do? Do you remember?
It was a half a dozen ramps.
Six.
It was quite expensive.
Yeah, but it was a pretty significant contribution, so if you think to thank Cal for it, please do. Um, Cedar Street or Reddy Park, um, the Green Region Grant will be awarded in June, and this will cover the engineering and planning of the park. Fully engineered plans will be used for future submittals, um, to get grants to pay for them and for the actual construction. And then we just approved sending the grant for the demolition up to full council. And someone on Facebook came up with a funny name for the park. It was like contention park or something.
Argument park.
Argument park, yeah.
Makes me think of a Mont Platon.
I still like that name, Moretti, since Mr. Moretti did sell it, so it's a big discount, but.
But we will erect our Festivus pole, we cheer. There are influences.
Right. Or the Park Team at Park Face.
Isn't, isn't that why he, um, offered to sell it below market value? He wanted it named after his mother? He didn't ask.
He didn't demand.
Wow.
He didn't demand. Um, and he also didn't put a restriction on us for using it in a particular way. It was very.
Okay. That's my understanding.
But he did, he did give it to us below market, and there's a, I think at some point, um, have we formally thanked him?
Yeah.
Okay, we did.
I mean, a couple times.
Okay.
Yeah.
I remember he came in, but it, I mean, he was, um, his life was saved by, uh, automatic defibrillator, which Mr. Glansman had paid for to be at the, um, high school, and, uh, this was kind of a thank you. Finally, Cheltenham DEP penalties, uh, it looks like we're still talking back and forth. They have penalties that were millions, they got them dropped down to hundreds of thousands. We owe 12%, and we're still arguing with them about whether we owe it all or how much or not. And we've got a meeting set. George?
We did have a meeting done in Abington about another, uh, grant opportunity, and we touched on this.
Okay.
It was a rather heated discussion.
I'm in.
Cheltenham and Abington.
Well, they were good, and we get to watch.
Yeah, I just said, no, I'm watching.
Yeah, but Abington's got a lot more going.
Well, Abington showed that the, um, the overages and the, and the fines occurred on days that they didn't have overages from their meters.
Correct.
So they're saying they owe nothing.
Okay. What happened to us? Do we have overages on our meters on those days?
We have less, um, ability to know what we had back then because it's eight years ago.
Oh, it's before.
We just got all new meters, uh, in the last five years.
All right.
But we still have an opportunity, and we're in, we're in, nobody's paid it.
Please, it's a talk.
I bet we had. The pressure's lighting them up a little bit with them having sold their system.
Oh, did they sell?
They, they've agreed to sell. It takes a while. He said they won't see cash for a few months to a few years.
How will that, um, affect their taxpayers? Will they just, will they, they sold it to Aqua, right?
Aqua was the only bidder.
The only bidder, and so Aqua, I assume is gonna pass that on to the.
That's how it usually works.
Customers. That's how it usually works, but it's just amazing that.
12% will get passed on to us.
Right.
Oh, it is monitored.
I mean, that, yeah, it has to be a rate case, has to go forward.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, they can't, you know, carte blanche, but they will take.
Their stuff is going on.
Those are gonna do all the repairs and then.
Pass that cost on, okay, okay.
So, um, other business, just one quick thing. Um, this is just for signed checks. I signed a $1,700 check to the Doylestown newspaper for advertising all these things. And it, like, ticks me off. Is there a legal, I know that we have to advertise in a publication, a generally available publication or something like that. Is there a cheaper way to do it than in the Doylestown paper for $1,700?
Uh, well, as long as it's a newspaper of a general regulation within the community, um, certainly, um, our office could work with the administration to see if there's anything cheaper. The problem, I will tell you.
That's the cheapest?
That really is. If you're looking at the Inquirer, I just know this from when I was doing it, um, if you go to the Inquirer, it's twice that much at least, I think. Date and love?
Y- yes, yeah, yes.
Who will be, I believe it's time to let you get that change, nobody.
Well, if, if I, if I could comment on that.
Please do.
Um, now that you need to know my personal history, but my mother happens to work for the Reading Eagle as the legal advertisement person, and.
We don't want to put her out of job.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Actually, I do.
Actually, she would be fine with that, I think. Um, but, uh, but, so, so I actually get calls from her sometimes wanting to know what the rates are down here in Montgomery County versus what the Reading Eagle in Berks County is charging.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, it does sound like in some of our newspapers, it might actually be more competitive than up in Berks County. I would also suggest to you, there is a very strong lobby in Harrisburg on behalf of newspapers because I will also suggest that this is a huge revenue source for newspapers, particularly now, that, you know, when.
There's no other.
Exactly. So, I mean, my, my mother's entire job now is just devoted strictly to.
Legal.
Legal advertising, ordinances, trusts, and, um, and the like. And I, I, so she gets often questions wanting to know, with sheriff sales, but how come sheriff sales are down this month? Why is it not the same as it was the prior month? I don't know, because a lot of people aren't going to foreclosure.
Here's a thing, though.
So, it is, it is a revenue source, and there is a big lobby in Harrisburg to, to not change it, because there was a movement previously to move it to online.
Yeah.
As opposed to just print, and that did not.
Interesting, thank you. And the idea behind advertising is an admirable one, not, I don't know, print or...
I'm not opposed to transparency.
I think it's very important.
No, but it comes to the point, but what is the intent? The intent is to reach people. How do you reach people in 2018 and it's not a classified ad?
It's our legal obligation to do it, and if we do it that way, we're covered and we're doing what we're supposed to do and what we have to do. And if we don't, we're not, so we're going to do it. I guess it's been $1700.
But that's why we're all happy if you're doing that.
I am a cheap person. All right, we already had special council meeting. I don't have anything else. Does anybody else have any business for admin and finance? All right, I move the adjutant.
Okay.
One favor?
All right. Okay. Are you leaving us yet?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Are you really leaving?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll email the guidance.
Okay, all right, sorry.
All right, make this quick. Is there any public comment about building zoning and revitalization? Okay. And report from the Planning Commission, there's no one from the Planning Commission here. I have been out of town. Manager Locke attended last night the Planning Commission that, and it looks like from their agenda, they talked about the, you know, the borough made a comment on the SEPTA proposal to elevate the platform for the train station. They have been continuing to review the comprehensive plan, 2035 comprehensive plan, with the county planner, Marley Vice, and they reviewed our medical marijuana growing ordinance, and gave a letter of support for the local share grant. And then I guess reviewed the 610 Summit Royzman Summit House Development. And, and an ongoing project for the Planning Commission is going to be a review and update of our local historic resource inventory, which is a building, a list of buildings that are of significance in the borough. Any questions about Planning Commission? Did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered everything. It was a very well-run meeting, and the agenda's, they're doing minutes now. The people that were on previously, they're, they're still on, they're getting used to the time zone, or time change, changed to 6:30. So we had three people for minute seven. It was really well-run, a couple of people came from the public and talked. The last presentation of the 2035 comprehensive plan was last night. It was briefly presented because we just did it probably four times now. But we went over all questions that were posted, both online and that were off of, or asked at, at meetings, we went over them. Marley provided a list of all the minor changes she had, which were grammar, spelling, a couple pictures that, that were in the, in the draft that we had asked that she reconsidered. She just, she had a beautiful picture of York Road showing all Lindy's planters and the drakes having a festive night. But the picture in the center was a dead tree that we have scheduled to remove. And when I pointed it out there, she said, "I didn't notice that tree. Look how pretty it is all here." Like, it is gorgeous, but for some reason, the dead tree. Because, I guess, because I'm a little bit of a... So she has another angle that doesn't show that, just tiny little...
That's good.
Very minor changes. And that will be before council next Wednesday night for final adoption. Also, Public Care and the Stadtrupfer will be here for that also.
Okay, formal adoption. Great. And I want to thank you again publicly for your careful eye in reading through the plan and catching all the things.
I will.
Thank you so much. Is there a report from the Building Department?
There's a permit report in your packet. It's blue in color, the header on it. And it records every permit that we've issued. We've been very busy this year in the Building Department. We had hired a part-time fire marshal. He's come on with properties, helping with property maintenance. He's also received both his residential and commercial plumbing certifications now, so we don't need a third party to do our plumbing inspections. And I'm speaking of Kevin Lynch, who's sitting here as if he's not in room, but that, you know, that was a great thing.
And it saves us a bunch every hour that Kevin can do it instead of the third party, it saves us...
We pay $80 an hour for a third party.
Right, so it saves us $50 an hour for the order. So, had the fire marshal Lynch do it.
And we have a plan for it. He's, he's working on certification for building that.
That's great.
We have a plan to get him in shape by the end of the year to where he could do that. Right now, our, our inspector had, had resigned. He had some illness in the family, he had just, and he was a great guy, it was a shame he finally got somebody decent. His boy took ill and he resigned and retired. Real nice gentleman. We ran an ad, we had people come in, we interviewed them, we went through three different third parties trying to get somebody in a couple days a week. It's tough when it's only two days. So since March, whatever, whatever is in plumbing, I've been handling those inspections and reviews. And I just would like to point out that our, our permits are really up this year in residential. It's almost even or down in commercial so far, but we know we have a lot of commercial coming in. We've issued, this year we've issued 235 building permits and...
I have to ruling.
And 50 zoning permits. So we've been very busy. Shelby helps out a lot in administration, but the numbers are here. We break the book a little with Kevin. Questions, you can certainly ask me now or email me if it pops up later.
Any questions?
No more, don't be interested in what is. Someone was working on the Lorenz household, they're redoing their kitchen, I'm sure there's a permit in there for that. And the contractor was very, very complimentary about the process and what it was like prior to 2006, and the difference, and how much better it is to, how much, how better it is to come in and have be processed efficiently and in a timely fashion, and he credited that with the administration, so.
Great, thank you.
Professor Owens, nice to hear, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, new business. We already had our Taco Bell project discussion. The next thing on the agenda says current development, potential projects, and hearings. There is, with regard to the 610 Summit Avenue Royzman Senior Housing Project, the ZHB decision is under appeal at Court of Common Plead, so I guess that...
That's the 74 unit capacity issue, so very fundamental.
There's a project being proposed, 141 to 169 Greenwood House Apartments. A revised zoning application is pending on that, is that right?
That is correct. They expected to come back within six to eight weeks, but it's been six weeks. The only change that I've had on that is the architects, engineers that we have met with haven't communicated with us recently, and Mr. Yanoff has indicated that he's representing that owner.
Yeah, that, that's also my understanding, Mr. Locke. I received a telephone call from Mr. Yanoff's partner with regard to this property, and it's my understanding that they'll be representing the property owner if they decide to move forward.
That indicated to me that they may not be able to meet zoning, but they thought they could. They were going to take those plans back and revise two or three things and try to comply with all zoning so it wouldn't have to go to ZHB. But now that we've been contacted by a zoning lawyer, it kind of indicates they might not have been able to.
Okay.
As soon as we get the plans, we'll let you know.
Thank you. Yeah, we'd like to take a look at those. There's a zoning violation appeal for 301 Runnymede, continued to 7:00 PM Wednesday, July 12th at Burton Hall. That, when was that? Remember when? The Taco Bell is the 28th, is it the same date? Whatever.
I always get a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the hearing was on June 7th, Thursday, June 7th, and now has been continued until July 12th. All right. On the 28th, the ZHB hearing application will, it has been deemed complete, and they will move forward to the ZHB on the 28th. That is projected to be held at the high school auditorium. And we will bring forward our, oh no, we just, sorry, we should... Sorry. Thought we were going to bring it forward on the 27th, but... So it will be interesting to see if they reconsider or withdraw their application. I don't know.
It's time will tell.
Yeah. Okay. Revised Planning Commission meeting schedule, I think we now know that they'll meet the third Tuesday of each month at 6:30. And those minutes, agenda and meeting time can be posted on the Borough website. And we have already discussed the Cedar Street, Moretti Park grants and proposed actions there. So, ongoing business, in 2017, we applied for and received a 2040 implementation grant award to do a Southern Gateway project on York Road, and this is on either side of York Road on the Glanzman property. So there's the old bank building where they have some cars parked, on the, let's say that's the east side going north, and then a corresponding project over on the west side, sort of right between the dry cleaner and the Glanzman's new service center. Unfortunately, Ray Glanzman passed away two weeks ago, and we had been working, the step that needs to happen is to ask Jim Glanzman for easement so that we can begin that work. So we just wanted to allow for a proper period of mourning before we move ahead with that. What, what do you think is the proper period of mourning, and when should we move ahead with that?
Yeah, I think that a couple weeks is what I had planned to give, and it has been a couple weeks now.
Okay. Maybe try to line something up for July, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, July, yeah, totally. That'll do a good month.
Right. Okay. Thank you for pursuing that. Of course, I'll be away in July, so if you want me to be around for it, maybe it would have to be August. Greenwood and West Avenue Concrete Compliance Update, do you want to just tell us about that, Manager Locke?
Yes. We had cited a lot of properties on both Greenwood and West, West between Cedar Street, where the business district ended, Cedar Street and Walna. We, we had cited several properties, almost every one of them. And when I say cited, we sent them a notice telling them they needed to fix their, nobody was there in the citation. But it took a long time, we didn't pay, that's a state road, we hadn't paved it, so it wasn't what the paving project, which is how we normally do the repairs. It took us a long time, but we had all but one house complied now. He has two blocks. He had three, he did one, he's real short on money. We've been talking to him, and he filed for a permit and he plans to do it. We had the one house that is, does the commercial, it's in C1, he's allowed to, it's all parking lot in front. He did replace his old front sidewalk that was required, and I think he's done a lot of the cleanup. He had one other thing to do with the van. He's going to remove the van from the property that people that didn't like getting in there. Do you know anything more on that one, Kevin? No? No? He's off the to-do list. Okay. He's been spoken to and he's agreed to move it, it just hasn't happened yet.
Thank you for following up on that. The handicap curb cut ramps installed on York Road, a second letter has been drafted and sent to PennDOT requesting the ramp removals and restorations be expedited due to safety concerns. So these are the three ramps that are not at crosswalks, and, you know, we're very concerned. So we had asked Manager Locke to put big barrel, orange barrels on them, and I think the barrels are kind of deteriorating, and they also look not so nice. So we really want those ramps to be, the repair of those ramps to be expedited. Great. I'm just charging through, if there are questions, please interrupt. The, we are still moving forward with our RFI. Proposals have been delivered to the RDA, to the redevelopment authority, that is, and we are trying to arrange a meeting with redevelopment authority and members of the small work group so that we can think more about what additional steps need to be taken. And Verizon Utility Pole Removal and Update, having attended the Public Works Meeting, I know that that is an ongoing project. Any update? Oh, you have, that's right, you had Verizon and PICO in here the other day.
Yes, I did. Verizon is, is filing an application to install a cell facilities on 610 York, and we did let them know this, the last time we had them in for small antenna, it was only two poles, we put pressure on them for their approval to help us with this, even though it's a different division. And it was helpful. We had gotten, Counselor Connors and I met with PICO this week, who has pledged to assist us in trying to wrap this up. Jim has been tracking it. We haven't had action from them in two to three weeks now, though. So we did tell them at this, at this cell meeting that this would be something that we would be talking to them about. It was a pre-application meeting, it wasn't an official submittal, but they are gathering information for that. We also, I was directed to begin, I, within the rate of way, dangers that were created by Verizon. They'd take a pole out, and they had a two-foot hole there, and they walked away from it. Several concrete areas where locks were raised, and we've been making temporary repairs. We've been documenting that because we plan on building them for that.
Great.
The only other thing is, we were told to, to try to go to, to Representative McQuarrie and ask for his assistance. He has liaisons with Verizon. And PICO said that we would probably get pretty far using that person.
Okay. And is it my understanding that you told Verizon that, I mean, this is a pre-application meeting, but that we really need to see some action on this other matter before we move ahead with their application?
Yes, I discussed that with their attorney, who was the same attorney that we discussed the previous day before we got something moving.
Yeah. Okay. Right, but it's not enough just to take the holes out, they need to restore the, the side block.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you for keeping that on the front burner. I don't see any other items on, oh, one more item, sorry. Okay. So we have received a request to honor a, the chief of nursing staff, chief nursing staff, who will be retired from Abington Jefferson Health at the end of June. And that person has, the people that work with this person who's retiring, whose name is Terry Riley?
She lives in Janey?
No, she does not reside in Janey. It's her favorite place in the whole world, and she spends a lot of time in Town Square in Portersville. So they want to sponsor a bench with a plaque.
They want to sponsor a bench with a plaque.
They want to do that if they want a plaque.
Seems okay.
I agree.
Yeah. It did prompt me, though, to think about how, I think that we should form a small group of people, it could just be two people, to formulate some guidelines about the sponsoring of benches, or the dedication of benches, or like putting things in Town Square.
Do you want to weigh off to make that decision?
No, I think we could go ahead with this, but I think it, it just raises the issue in my mind that I think we should develop some guidelines around this. So, is there anyone who might be willing to volunteer? And George said he knew of a municipality that had some guidelines.
I would volunteer.
Okay.
Great.
You know what I think somebody you need to do is figure out how many legging opportunities there are in the first place.
Right, right.
Right. And actually, we could probably use new benches and things like that, so there could be giving opportunities for the benches and that kind of thing.
Don't give any more hand.
Yeah.
I also think we need to consider, and it's not something to decide tonight, about Mr. Ray Glanzman, who was such an integral part and kept the business in town.
Thank you, yeah.
He gave, like Rick mentioned, he has donated hundreds of thousands of dollars to this borough on top of being a consistent taxpayer on a lot of different levels. But he did give the defibrillator that saved Bobby Moretti's life, yes, when he, my husband was at. But, but he was, he did really care about this town, and it reflected in his...
Every time anybody asked him, he wrote it.
He wrote it, like with the, with the run, with the, these are just things I worked on. I know with the library, with the, the Arts Fest, he's been an integral giver that way.
Well, could I ask the two of you then to brainstorm what would be a proper way to honor him?
Sure. David, how about...
Maybe that would be a plaque.
I'll email you.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
I mean, your one thought would be, are there sections of the future park that would be appropriate?
Or even, yeah, there's a lot of different things we can think of and ways to, I think we shouldn't limit ourselves. But yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, it should be more than a park.
Yeah, there are different ways.
So I don't think we need a resolution with regard to this, do we?
Yeah.
We can just move it up to that more than that. Yeah. And also in that, I don't know, but also on the line, we're going to be, I'm thinking, Jack Miller, Joshua Jackson?
Yes, it turns out we have some...
More State. Yeah, we have Lee, M.D. Runners.
But they didn't, didn't know.
At the Kuanis Run, everybody who won, the girl and the boy were from Jankton.
If I could point out, they were at state championships on Color Day, and they're both Reds, and we would have won if they'd been here in town.
That's a little bit of wishful thinking, but whatever. Keep telling yourself that.
Red, red.
Whatever, whatever, but that might have been true. But anyhow, but at the Jankton Kuanis Run, Jack Miller came in first, and a little girl, the squirrel, the youngest squirrel girl came in first. She's as fast as anybody.
Yeah, I couldn't believe she was before.
I mean, she's young, and she really did a great job, but anyhow, these two did great at states.
So we'll be... So we'll be ready.